Thank you. Welcome back. We are in the December 18th, 2019 school committee meeting. We had started prior and so we're actually going to jump right in with our -- I'm going to take things a bit out of order. We actually were up to the public comment section, but I'm going to do the student reps first, then we'll move to public comment, and then the superintendent's report. And for those watching, we're piloting, changing our public comment time, so we're actually having it at the start of the meeting as opposed to the end of the meeting. And so, we're excited to see how this goes. But first, we would love to welcome our high school student representative, Angelina Champa. Come on up. Thanks for being here.
Hi, thank you for having me. Hello, I hope all is well with everyone. December has been an eventful month for our high school a cappella group, Soundscape. Soundscape went Christmas caroling as their annual fundraiser and had multiple performances. The group performed at the Festival of Trees, the tree lighting, and a town board of selectmen meeting. December is also concert season for our high school band and strings orchestra. A small group of high school orchestra players performed at the Festival of Trees. The high school orchestra had a joint concert with the high school concert choir and eighth grade chorus on December 5th. Soundscape also performed at this concert. The high school band shared a concert with the seventh and eighth grade band on December 12th. Winter sports are underway. Boys and girls basketball had their season opener on December 13th at Burlington. Girls hockey has a game tonight at Restusha against Redding, while boys hockey faces Redding tonight in Redding. Our coed swim team had their first meet at the Shawshin Tech on December 12th, and their next meet will be against Triton at the Burbank YMCA. The track meet got postponed to tomorrow that was supposed to be on Tuesday against Burlington due to the snow. Wrestling has a home meet tonight against Melrose, and the Sons of Italy tournament at the Shriners Auditorium this Saturday, December 21st. DECA sent over 100 students to the district competition on December 12th. Students competed in their business categories, and 58 Wilmington High School students have advanced. These students will compete at states in February in Boston. Students from our Rotary Interact Club helped out at Santa's Breakfast at the Knights of Columbus on December 7th. Interact is also having their holiday meeting tomorrow night at the Senior Center at 6:00 PM, and any alumni from the Interact Club are welcome to attend. MALE UN participated in conferences at St. John's Prep this past Saturday. Some of the conferences included the College of Cardinals, prison reform, and Hong Kong protests. MALE UN has scheduled an in-school conference for tomorrow, and they will be discussing the Electoral College from the point of view of past presidents. Students had the opportunity today to donate blood through the Red Cross today. Students learned that one pint of blood can save three lives. Signups have begun for the annual badminton tournament. Students will have the opportunity to face off against teachers. Prizes include a prom ticket for upperclassmen and spring fling tickets for underclassmen. On December 5th, eight students went to an equity summit at Tewksbury High School. At this summit, students learned what equity is and different ways to combat equity issues. Any questions?
That's a lot of exciting stuff.
Thank you for having me. Happy holidays.
Thank you for being here. And next, we have our middle school student representatives, Lindsay Anthony and Molly McDonald.
Last Tuesday, the eighth grade was able to attend the field trip to Chamber Theater to see plays that we learned about in ELA class. We would like to thank the school committee for letting us reschedule the field trip on such short notice.
You're welcome.
Today, seventh grade students were able to attend a Christmas carol at the North Shore Music Theater. Students have been reading and analyzing the book in English class so that they will have a strong understanding of the story while watching the play.
In gym class, we have begun the basketball tournament. Students of all grades participate during gym class. Students get placed on teams of four to six people, and they play three-on-three basketball. The winner will be crowned January after our Christmas vacation.
Since the beginning of the year, students in band, chorus, and strings have been preparing for their holiday concert. All three were a huge success, and students throughout all three performances were proud of what they were able to accomplish.
At the end of November, the sixth grade was visited by the author, Jessie Genowitz. They will start reading a book that she wrote called "The Donut Fix."
This Friday, there will be a holiday ugly sweater spirit day. We ask all students and staff to wear an ugly sweater to show their excitement for the upcoming winter break.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Thanks for being here. Happy holidays.
Thank you for having us.
Next on our agenda, we have public comment. Please state your name and address. Thank you.
Amy Lodgington-Floeffotner, Ave. So I have just a quick question. You may address this later on, but I just have concerns how the superintendent's budget's going to affect the special ed services, specifically the follow-through of an IEP. Just giving examples, there's so many students, teachers are not aware of what's on the students' IEP, like how to grade them or whatever like that, so you know, you're losing time. So I was just wondering, is there anything in the budget that will help maybe the teachers, whether time, money, to, you know, to help facilitate this better for the students?
Well, typically, we don't answer questions.
Okay, no, that's fine.
But I do think that will be answered during the budget presentation, if you can stick around.
I might just have to go home and watch the rest of it. My kids are at home by themselves, so I just want to, like I said, ask the question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Roberta Biskin, and I live on Grove Ave, here in Wilmington. As a parent and a taxpayer of this town, I'm here tonight to offer my comments with regard to the superintendent's proposed budget, specifically how it relates to the student support special education programs. I'd like to first state that I appreciate the current leadership's efforts in recognizing the need to review our student support and special education services, and in following through with having an external review completed, so to better assist our administration in determining how to move forward, with ensuring our programs and supports are working effectively and consistently, and meeting the academic and social-emotional needs of all of our students. As a parent with three school-aged children, two of which are at the middle school level and are receiving special education programming, I'm pleased that in creating the proposed budget, recommendations from the Walker Report relative to special education support services in those areas are being considered. While I feel this is a step in the right direction, as a parent -- excuse me. I lost my place, sorry. As a parent, I would like to better understand and hope that clarification will be provided, perhaps through a breakdown of how the funds within the proposed budget will be dispersed not only within the budget, but also within the classrooms and within the specific programs identified. Part of Dr. Brand's proposed budget includes budget priorities, such as the initial priorities that were identified as part of the Walker Report, as well as examining our resources that provide the ability for our district to respond to the growing social and emotional programs to support students. I lost my place again, sorry, guys. From a parent's perspective, I believe that the Walker Report provided valuable information and necessary recommendations in how to effectively make improvements within the areas lacking. However, it was extremely concerning that the parent survey that was to be used as another tool in completing the external review was not shared during this time that the review was being done. While the district has since sent out the survey, it's important that the results of that survey be made public, as well as how, if at all, the data from that survey may impact the results of the report and/or the proposed budget priorities outlined by Dr. Brand. More importantly, in doing so, it provides some of the accountability parents are hoping for. I'm particularly concerned with the importance of the ongoing communication happening consistently within our schools, as well as with parents, in effort to ensure understanding of what steps are being taken currently, and executing ways to address those areas that are lacking, and how the action plans within the proposed budget will be executed moving forward, and the assurance that the execution of these action plans will remain consistent across all domains. More specifically, I'm concerned with the execution of the action plans in the area of the language-based and learning center programs at the middle school level. As a parent of a child who was in the language-based program, and who has ultimately been failed by our district due to the many issues previously identified, and who is now sadly out of district, I find it extremely concerning that per Ms. Legrand's recent memorandum, in the area of updating the language-based programming, that the action plans indicate "exploring current practices, developing a plan to access program needs," yet this is not slated to be completed until winter 2020-2022. Furthermore, I'm concerned that with reference to the Learning Center staffing review, that the action plan is to provide additional special education teacher through the proposed budget, but not until the fiscal year of 2021. While I understand the issues regarding there not being enough time for professional development, collaboration between staff members, and bridging the gaps of the inconsistency outlined within the Walker Report, and more importantly, while I understand change cannot happen overnight, action steps need to happen now. While I'm not an administrator or a teacher, and I don't have the ideal solution, at minimum, it's necessary that there be an interim plan in place now, such as perhaps creating, for example, an online resource guide, which provides guidance and tools so that teachers and staff can access this, so that it will help in ensuring that there's consistent understanding of the current programs and supports in place. It's vital that there is more accountability from administration, that ongoing brainstorming and problem-solving is being done consistently and regularly, in which to find the time needed for the necessary and required professional development, staff training, and consistent monitoring of programs. This should include providing detailed and frequent updates to committee members and parents with a status of creating a solution to this well-known problem. Frankly, my son has lost too much time already. And while I want him in district, and while he's entitled to receive his education in our public school system, it's unacceptable that the proposed action plans will take far too much time to re-truition, leaving me without confidence that my son can receive the supports he needs now. And more importantly, it prevents him from being able to do truly what he wants to do, and that is to return to his community and attend school with his twin sister and his peers. More and more kids are being failed, and more and more kids are struggling, partly due to the gaps in our current programs. As one of the committee members pointed out recently, more than half of those kids that drop out of school are those kids that are on IEPs or who have disabilities. As a parent with children on IEPs, that statistic hits home. The time is now. Again, we need more accountability and follow-through with recognizing the current needs. I realize there's never a quick fix in these situations, especially when there are several areas in need, but I believe that everyone in this room shares the same mission, and that is to ensure the kids of this town are receiving the best and most appropriate education that they can. And thus, it's imperative that action is being taken and executed now, so to ensure that the students in this district are receiving what they need to reach their fullest potential academically, socially, and emotionally. Otherwise, parents are left with no alternative but to send their children out of district. I think we can all agree that there are many things not working within our district, and as a parent, it's vital to me to see more action and less talk about exploring or developing programs or plans. While exploration, development, and work in progress are necessary for long-term solutions, time is of the essence, and the district as a whole has already lost too much of it. I am open to working together with administration, school committee staff members, staff, and parents alike, in finding ways to address the here and now, and securing that the best interest of all of our students in this district are being considered as our top priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have our superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. There are just two items this evening under Superintendent's Report, Section 7, just to talk briefly to each. As you know, recently, we returned to the conversation here at this table around the homework policy, and the ongoing efforts to shore up and put into place, if you will, the adjustments to the policy that this committee passed a little over a year ago. The next steps as outlined here, and as I discussed previously, is to put into place a working group to establish procedures. So, procedures typically defined as those that can help support the implementation of policy. And those procedures, I believe, as mentioned previously, will help serve our teaching staff well throughout the district and all of our buildings, and specifically, the variations or differences at the different levels, that is to say, elementary, middle, and high school level. And so, I provide you here in the community with a copy of the memo that recently went out. I'm pleased to say that we've had a great response from teachers who have stepped forward and expressed their interest. And in concert with working with Dr. Regan, we will set forth to establish these procedures, and I'll keep you updated as that work unfolds. The timeline is included there, and it's a quick turnaround, but something that I truly don't think will take all that long to put into place. The second item is just a brief update on the director of athletics search. As you know, the district is searching for a permanent director of athletics. Mr. Ed Harrison is serving in interim capacity over the course of this year, and as with all other administrative searches, I'll always endeavor to keep the committee and the community informed of where we're at. You'll see in this memo here, the list of those that will be serving on the search committee, and thank you to all of those additional members who stepped forward to express their interest. I won't list the names, but you can see them there. There were a total of 25 staff and community members combined who expressed their interest, and certainly, I think underscores the interest that the community has. There is a survey that is out there that provides an opportunity for community feedback to help inform the search committee around the specific qualities and characteristics that are desired and optimal, seen as optimal, the next candidate. And then finally, the search timeline. We are on time right now, as it were. The position has been posted. The deadline to submit applications is January 4th, right when we get back in the new year, and the committee will then go to work. I'll just remind members of the community that there will be the opportunity for anyone to participate in the process, and that will come a little bit later in the winter, the first part of February, if we can stay on course with community opportunities to meet the finalists that are advanced by the committee. And with that, that concludes the superintendent report this evening, unless there are any questions that you have for me.
Questions? Mr. Vaxton?
Just where can people find the survey, if they still want to take it by Friday?
Thank you for asking. So, the survey link has been sent out, Tristan Wright, recently. We sent that out to all community members, and for the almost 1,200 Twitter followers, that's on my Twitter feed as well, too. Snow days have done wonders for the number of followers there, so.
I just have a quick question about the homework policy. So, the working groups are -- so, this is not now the former group that worked on the policy, because I'm not seeing school committee members or parents?
No. So, this is specifically staff who are going to -- who served, the first call-in, the first members who served on that committee. I think in many cases, we have those representatives who served on that group who stepped forward to volunteer, but this is teachers right now.
Okay. So, because I've got an email, I did volunteer, but is that not happening now? Do we not need school committee members?
I did volunteer.
That's okay. I'm just curious, and no parents. So, teachers is what you're looking for?
Teachers, right.
Okay. Mrs. Burns?
Just a quick question, if you could refresh my memory, please, and forgive me if you may have touched a pot, and I didn't capture it. Has the position been posted to school spring?
For the athletic director?
Yes.
It's been posted in school spring. The MIAA website, as well as the national, I forget the full name, but the National Association of Athletic Directors, so three spots.
And when is that to close?
January 4th.
January, that's January. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. There is no old business. We're going to move into new business, and that is 9A, FY '21 Superintendent's Preliminary Budget.
Thank you very much. In your packet is the materials to support, along with the budget binder, to support this, the first discussion around the preliminary budget as it currently stands right now. Before I get into the presentation, many thanks to many folks who helped make this possible, to pull together the information that's included in here. Of course, Mr. Rogirio and Ms. Raffey in his office, who really carry an awful lot of the load of putting this together. But in addition, I want to extend my thanks to members of the leadership team who collectively more than contribute, but really help provide the context for this. I know the title is Superintendent's Preliminary Budget, but truthfully, it comes from the ideas and recommendations of the members of the leadership team, many of whom are here this evening, in addition to Mr. Rogirio and Dr. Regan. We also have the other members of the senior leadership team in the audience tonight, Ms. Brown Legrand, Mr. Lord, and Ms. Stern Armstrong, and thank you to our principals, who will be here at the next budget conversation in later January. So, the point this evening is to provide you with more than a glimpse, but a deeper dive, if you will, into what the current budget plan looks like at this point in time, based upon the information that we have before us. And it's a lot of information, for sure, but the brief presentation this evening is to try and provide a 20,000-foot, if you will, overview of the budget plan as it currently stands, with full intention, and just as a point of reminder for community members who might be tuning into this, this is the first of really what are three formal conversations, presentations, if you will, this preliminary budget conversation this evening, the recommended budget presentation that will happen January the 22nd, and then the budget hearing, which I'm forgetting the date, but it's in February 12th, mid-February. The beginning context here, as mentioned, is that this is not my budget alone. This is respective of the contributions of many members of your leadership team throughout the district, and so thus, I really truly would define this as a team approach. This is a challenging task. This is not just about Wilmington. This has been the case in every district that I've worked in, and I think thus, pretty much across the Commonwealth, and that is with the team -- sorry, with not the team meeting. With the town meeting approach, it is the case that there is, out of necessity, many conversations that have to begin very early in the school year, and that's a challenging thing. Opening the doors in September, just getting things underway, and then being asked to submit budgetary recommendations for a year in the future. And I do think that that's very difficult. I've never worked in private industry, but I'm told that that generally is not how private industry would approach it. So, I think that there's a nuance here that's important to point out. And certainly, it's the case, and this will be profiled a little bit, certainly this evening, briefly, there are lots of great ideas, and lots of suggestions around resources, but I recognize that there's limitations. There's limitations in terms of what's reasonable to ask the taxpayers and the citizens of the town and the school committee ultimately to support. The development of the budget plan in particular, this year, I think it's important to point out that there are aspects related to our strategic plan that with deliberacy, we've begun to try and address within this budget, and where and when it's possible, every effort will be made to try and tie those back to specifically the objectives or the initiatives. The grid, if you will, here provides just a brief glimpse of, as this plan stands right now, where I think the specific initiatives fall into relationship to some of the budget and fiscal resources that are being requested. Under student learning, professional development, technology integration, and program effectiveness, and the learning environments, technology integration. I should add here, and I'm sorry if I didn't quite make this clear, this 20,000-foot view with intention at the next meeting, we will go in a much deeper dive, in terms of all of these areas, to provide you as a committee and members of the community with a clear understanding around exactly what some of these requests look like, and more detail around the respective departmental budgets. The budget in context has a number of different pieces to it, if you will. First off, building the budget and how we go about doing that. First off, there are a number of fixed costs, as you can probably anticipate and imagine, obligations and assessments. And so, that information, that data is gathered, rolled forward, in many cases, from that which we have right now. Those fixed costs can range, of course, greatly. The bulk of our budget, of course, as you know, revolves around human capital, but there are other things that, as an example, transportation, and the funding of transportation buses to transport students. So, all of those things are wrapped together. We obviously need to make sure that we are appropriately funding legal mandates, special education programming in district where and when possible, and coming with that, of course, comes a whole complement of necessary resources. Determining the appropriate number of sections at all grade levels is also a fundamental starting piece, and we do our best, again, in terms of taking a look at the snapshot of data right now that we have around enrollment, and make best-case predictions for September. And of course, in addition to classroom teachers, that are often a lot of staff that we have to help provide programs and services each and every day. There are a number of budget priorities around which this budget is shaped, and this slide provides an overview of that, and quickly, I'll go through them. Of course, making sure that we provide as much as we can within the context of the services and programs that are deemed essential to Wilmington students. There are a number of areas, priorities, that are emerging, as mentioned, around our strategic plan, that this budget plan, as it stands right now, goes to support, supporting students within the least restrictive environment, and coupled with that, as mentioned earlier, the efforts to try to begin to put into place and address some of the recommendations that were put forth in the Walker Report. You will hear more about some of the proposals to help support the growing social-emotional needs of our students. And we have, as you also know, a wide number of curriculum-related efforts, programs, and such that are being implemented that continue, and similarly, technological infrastructure and expansion will be part of this. There are assumptions that we are making, and have to, again, out of necessity for the timing of where we're at, and when this budget actually comes into fruition. First and foremost, enrollment. How many students we're predicting right now, you can see there, there's a little bit over 3,100 students. And in addition to that, we are anticipating a total of 65 out-of-district students that come with, obviously, resources associated with them. There are a certain number of grants and state-funded contributions that this budget relies upon. It's no different from any other year, or from any other district's budget, that's for certain. Legal mandates, as mentioned, staffing guidelines, and the last two, I think, just important to point out, because I think it's important, I consider this an assumption, and that is that we will continue in this district to provide transportation services to families with no user fees, which we do not, and the extracurricular programs that we have, primarily it's athletics, but it does go beyond that, that largely, I would suggest, are supported by the operating budget that you have and ultimately will approve. A snapshot, that's certainly, all of this is provided in the budget materials that are included in the binder, as well as the larger packet. Snapshot of comparison to fiscal year '20, which is this year, so 2019 and '20, school year. We're talking, of course, about fiscal year '21, which is 2021, 2020-2021, and you can see the line items of salary rolls up to be just 34, a little over $34.5 million. Non-salary, you can see just a little bit over $9 million. Collectively, as this budget proposal currently stands right now, $43,952,921. I never did check with you, if you want me to say the exact dollar, or I'm rounding it off. I should have done that.
Round up, Dan.
And you can see the variance or change that's included in there. We are a large operation, and obviously, as mentioned, we are, we really center around human capital and the good people that we have working in all of the different roles. We use that acronym, I know a lot, FTE. That is Full Time Equivalent, because we have a lot of full, but also part-time, but collectively, when they are combined, we have 489 full-time equivalent staff that work to support our students and families each and every day. That's in this budget plan, and that in comparison to, is to the current FTE count of 478. The next few slides provide an overview of the newly proposed positions that are included in this budget plan at the current time. Again, it's with intention that I don't go to too deep of a dive, but just a broad overview, and forgive the typo in the very first one, the newly proposed position. The first one there is, which one is that again?
Team Chair.
Thank you. Sorry. The total, thank you, 11.25 full-time equivalent positions, when you combine all of these, and I'll take a moment to just go through these. The team chair, we're looking to shore that position up and put into place to help enhance support specifically for out-of-district students. Right now, that is being supported by or through a number of different resources. We'll talk a little bit more extensively with Alice at the next conversation, and that is a Walker Report. that is a Walker Report recommendation. As is the case for the recommendation to add another BCBA, or Board Certified Behavioral Analysis, that will enhance the direct services provided to students in our specialized programs, as well as expanding interventions around Tier Two and Tier Three. Again, also a recommendation from the Walker Report. Social worker at the middle school is also being recommended at this time. That's a 1.0 position, or full-time, and that really centers around trying to enhance our capacity to meet the needs of our students at that school, and specifically around mental health and SEL, or Social Emotional Learning Programming. Special education teacher also at the middle school, 1.0, is being recommended. It is also a recommendation that you find in the Walker Report, and that's to help enhance and expand inclusion services for students with disabilities. The final, sort of quick overview of the newly proposed positions at this time, the reading specialists at the Wildwood School, .25 FTE. This is an issue of just variations in total enrollment between the Wildwood and the Beltwell. Right now, the reading specialists are aligned or the same, but that's falling short in our ability to ultimately meet all of those needs, and so this expansion is being recommended. Educational assistance, total of 5.40 FTEs, and this number is specific to meet the projected needs of our student population at this time. Again, this is a great example of, based upon the information that we have before us right now. Obviously, this could change tomorrow. It could change three months from now, when certain students may move into the district, and we're not, we have to respond to that. But based upon the information we have right now, this is the number that we believe would be appropriate. Instructional technology technician, the recommendation here in this budget plan is to add 1.0 FTE. We have, and Ken will talk much more extensively about this at the next meeting, with the expansion of devices in the district, we are understaffed, just in short, in this department, and it certainly is an important area to also target. And then clerical support, .6 FTE, smaller piece of this, but it reflects the shift, this position was previously funded by a grant, and that grant money for this is going away, and at this time, the recommendation is to still keep this position in place. So when you roll that together, that's the total of the 11.25 FTEs. Personnel changes are provided with a little bit of a deeper dive, and you can see this in terms of analysis between FY '20, the start of the school year, and where these budgetary changes reflect going forward. And then, just a brief couple of more points around enrollment and budget planning, as I try and point out in the memo that's included here, and as mentioned earlier, certainly enrollment planning is a central piece of which, and around, the budget planning starts every year. And it is fair to say, as we're looking over the longer term, and defining longer term as the next three to five years, that right now, based upon the projections and the application of what's called the birth cohort survival methodology, which takes a look at, in short, how many students start in school in a particular cohort of kids, and how many continue with that cohort as it makes its way from year to year. Anyway, the incorporation of that calculus into our current enrollment does indicate right now, a continual decline within Wilmington over the next number of years. Now, that, of course, could change with a new housing development project, or an uptick in empty nesters moving out, and so on, but based upon the analysis right now, it's certainly very fair to say that there's a slight decline. I mentioned earlier around the basis upon which this budget plan is put together, and it's both the consideration of enrollment, but it's also consideration of the guidelines that are included in the collectively bargained agreement between the school committee and the Wilmington Teachers Association, and you can see the overview here on this slide, that the administration strives to try and shape the class sizes as best as is possible, not without its challenges, but as best as possible with these guidelines here. You can see a little bit of a deeper dive around what these projections hold going forward, and elementary is certainly one thing, but certainly taking a look at secondary is also another, and you can see that over time, slight, not significant, but certainly some slight variations in enrollment, and again, obviously, this can change. In particular, of course, as we've talked about here earlier in the school year, what does the retention rate look like from eighth to ninth grade? And that certainly can and holds the potential to impact these numbers going forward as well, too. The last few slides, just purely, purely the numbers, truly, for the most part, and that is what the respective salary changes are, so this would fall into that umbrella of obligations going forward. There are, of course, contractual obligations that we have to have to take into account, and that's really where Paul and his staff begin this planning, what are the steps and lanes, based upon the staff that we have. The new positions, of course, an important piece, and I just spent some time going through those. What are the salary increases according to the contractually bargained agreements, retirements, longevities, and so on? So when you roll that together, you can see that there's a significant increase, just to roll, even if you take out the newly proposed positions, I like to often describe this as what's necessary in terms of a fiscal increase to open our doors in September, or August, or whenever it is, and it's certainly well over $1 million. Everything remains status quo, and I think that that's always an important piece to point out when you're talking about the magnitude of a budget such as ours. The next slide here provides an overview of the non-salary changes, and that's certainly a smaller portion, but still an important piece of our budget planning, falling into this category is everything that's not human capital. And when we talk about programing, programming advanced curriculum, when we talk about professional development, when we talk about some of the other things, that's rolled up into this non-salary, non-salary overview. So, as it stands, a preliminary budget summary currently right now before you, and again, it's preliminary here, the middle of December, late December. You can see the salary, non-salary changes from fiscal year '20 to fiscal year '21, and how that rolls up as a dollar change and a percentage change. Capital requests, again, this is just meant to be a broad overview right now. As always, we look forward to the continual support of the town to help make these capital requests possible. We've certainly been the benefactors of some great support for our investment in largely technology, actually, well, not exclusively, but largely technology, as you take a look at this. One of the exceptions is the minivans, just as a point of reminder. While we do contract out for our large school buses, the yellow buses, we do own and operate the smaller special education vans to provide, sorry, in-town transportation. So, again, there will be certainly a deeper dive of this when we come back to this, but this is what we are looking at right now as part of the budget plan. And then, in summary, so this, as mentioned a couple of times, it's based upon what we know right now, and things can change. Hopefully, they don't, but they could, and we need to be mindful of that. There are a number of resources, as mentioned, that were not included in the budget plan. I felt that at this point in time, having to make some choices, I think what's being presented here is still, I respect, it's an increase. There are new positions, and that's not lost upon me, that there's a cost associated with that from, that has to be absorbed. And certainly, between now and the next time when we have a conversation, there may have to be some other adjustments and revisions going forward. The positions that were requested by members of the leadership team, but at this point in time not included in the preliminary budget, you can see on this screen here for a variety of reasons. But I thought it important to provide you with insight in terms of some of the other requests that are sitting out there, but at this point in time, anyway, based upon the budget plan, I didn't feel it could be moved forward as a recommendation. And the next steps, where we are, obviously, this evening, December 18th, the preliminary budget, we will be meeting with the town manager next week to better understand what the resource allocation is looking like across departments in the town. We will obviously be working closely with and paying attention to that number, and figuring out how that fits into this financial model or plan as it stands. January 22nd will be, your next, sorry, two meetings from now, your regularly scheduled meeting will be the recommended budget presentation, and then, February 12th, Mr. Reggio was right, the budget hearing. And that is the presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions, or my colleagues, if you have any.
Mrs. Barnes.
I think I've got a couple of questions I had forwarded on, that I think I would prefer to wait until the next step in more form. I think it's only appropriate, but I did have a general question with regards to how this year's budget was derived in taking into consideration the Student Opportunity Act. Do we know what monies will be disseminated to us? I know that at the last, I checked, I think, last week or so, that the protocols around what districts need to show for accountability were still being created, maybe you can add to that, but I just didn't know in preparing this preliminary budget, how much of that new legislation impacted, you know, has this impacted this preliminary budget, and what it will impact going forward, before we get to the final proposal?
From what is known, that act is not going to provide Wilmington with much additional funding. The one area that we may have a positive impact is in the circuit breaker, where the consideration, or what they're saying now is not only tuitions can be reimbursed, but transportation, special needs transportation. They're still working out the mechanics of how that'll work. I had a Masbro, my association, meeting last week, Jay Sullivan from DESC spoke a little bit, and they're still working out exactly how it'll work. Right now, the thought is potentially, the circuit breaker works, that there's a foundation enrollment number, and any tuitions on a particular student that's greater than four times that, you get reimbursed up to 75% of that dollar amount. That's still in place, and then they would add to that potentially the transportation for that student, but they might handle them separately, and any reimbursement for the transportation would be phased in, and I think it's 25%, 50% of that potential of 75% of over four times. It's kind of complicated, it's still working for it, but that would be the only benefit.
How many budget cycles will that be faded?
It'll be another four years, so it's why, to 100%. It might be something next year, but as far as, a lot of the additional funds in that act were ELL students, and based on the age of the ELL students, what grade they're in, low income and so forth, a lot of the funds are going toward, to those students, and they have adjusted, like healthcare costs and so forth, but based on projections, and we don't know exactly, but, you know, we're a minimum aid community. We had like $30 per child enrollment, that's probably where we're going to stay.
So in preparing this piece here, you didn't really factor in, did you factor in any of the, any of the projection that Wilmington might receive?
No, because all we might receive would be potentially some circuit breaker for transportation.
All right, that's good to know.
There is a little money in the budget, because part of that act also comes with some reporting that the district has to do.
Right.
And so forth, and we don't have a lot of money in the budget. We have some strategic plan-related funds that we might use, some of that. Depending on what that is, we don't know what it is yet, whatever reporting that all districts have to do around.
Isn't there a social-emotional line item within that opportunity that we might benefit from, as it pertains to our strategic plan and the initiatives that we're looking towards? I thought there was some, I mean, it reads like War and Peace, but.
Yeah, and truly, but just to add, there's certainly not been anything disseminated at a deeper level yet from the Department of Ed that I'm aware of, or from our association. It's, we're expecting it, as our, and you referenced this before, the necessary plan that districts are going to have to submit in not very months, many months away, but there's not been anything received by the district yet.
Because that's an April 1st deadline, if I'm.
I understand, yeah, but so I don't know what that's going to look like, so.
Very good, thank you very much.
Mr. Rexdale.
So the total recommended increase here is 4.80% total. That's higher than we usually end up with each year from the town. I think recently, we've been more in the 3.5% to 4%, maybe a hair over 4, 4.1 or 2. So if we end up having to kind of, again, pull back more towards maybe the 4%, where do you think that we're going to have to pull back from the recommendations currently in the preliminary budget? What is the current thinking?
We haven't gone there yet.
Fair enough, yeah.
Optimistic.
No, I understand well the question, and, you know, and it's, you know, I think the thing here, and I think that this is, you know, there's, I probably have used this term before, I know this is all about numbers, but there's a story, right? There's a story behind this, and I think that this story for this year that won't really, not necessarily has changed from the past year, is really trying to shore up and respond to the changing student need of a large portion of our population, and also look at trying to address some things that have been determined through different lenses to be areas that we need to expand. And, you know, many of those, not exclusively, are included in the Walker Report. You know, the total number of new positions, really with one, the one, two exceptions, 1.6, the technology, and the .6 shifting of the administrative support from the grant, they all center around student support services. And they are all, I would not define them as program improvements, bless you, program improvements, but rather putting into place resources that have, that we are lacking in, and/or that we are needing to respond to. An example of the, would be the teaching assistants, classroom assistants, right? That's, those respective responses are shaped around what the needs are that have emerged. So, you know, it's not lost upon me that, right out of the gate, there, I can understand that somebody might deem those as new positions, and of course, arguably, they are, but they're positions that really, you know, are believed right now to be necessary to support the student need. So, you know, I don't, I quite frankly, don't know where we go, and I know I've said this before, I know I did, through the budget conversation last year, I don't see an awful lot of extraneous funds anywhere in our budget. I truly don't, and, you know, a year and a half later, coming to see what we do have in allocations for the non-salary items, I think we, this district has certainly done a darn good job on some, on some limited resources, and I won't go into too much detail there, but I, the point being is, I don't know, and I think that any kind of reduction is going to have an impact somewhere, in some way, shape, or form, depending on what we have to try and anchor tail it to, and I think we're going to have to look deeply. I, you know, class sizes, I know I made the comment around there's a slight decline in, but it, you can argue that it's not significant across the board, it's, you know, when you spread it out over eight buildings, it smooths out if we're going to adhere to the guidelines for staffing, and certainly at the secondary level, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a significant drop going into sixth grade next year by about 50 students. That's a far different entity to try and respond to, because you're talking about team structure. It's not being recommended at this time that we remodel that, but we're going to have some hard work to do, and some difficult decisions to make if there's a big gap or big delta between what we're recommending.
Mrs. Newhouse.
I know that this is just a first step, and it's a lot of great information. Is there a way for, say, even us school committee members to help get the story out to better support this 4.8, because I feel like all of the positions that we're adding are greatly supporting our students' needs, and it's been well documented that these needs are needed, and to think of losing one or two of those positions because we can't get from 4.0 to 4.8 is sad for the students in supporting them appropriately. So how do we help you support? So how do we help you support this story and let everybody know that, how important this is for our students?
Yeah, it's, thank you for the question, and I, I think, you know, I, I think that there, first, we, we have to get some clarity around what we're actually looking at, and that will be step one. And step two, depending on what that looks like, I think there's certainly, I know that I can create materials that help provide some clarity around what this budget story's looking like, what the priorities are, you know, there, there certainly is some money in here, Paul mentioned it briefly, but we'll profile it around, I mean, some, not a lot in the context of the budget, but towards strategic planning. But I, I think my next step would need to be, there's a lot of information here, but to shape it in a way that's digestible for, for, for anyone to read, whether you're a numbers person or not, you know, and, and there's ways to do that, and, and I think that then collectively, we can try and advance that message and push that message out. Just need to be.
Mr. Bjork.
So when I, when I read through this, I was very encouraged by the, the number of positions you're looking to create for student support services, and I think it's indicative of our district's commitment to shore up and improve special education and student supports. I did have a question, though, about your phraseology, and I read this, I was kind of curious about this. In, under building the budget, when you say assume efforts to provide special education programming in the district when slash where possible, can you kind of elaborate by what, how you, what you mean by when and where possible?
Well, so I think that the, the, the work that this district has embarked upon, as I've come to learn over the last few years, for example, in building, in building programs at the elementary level specifically, and I, I may get the terms wrong, so I'm not going to use them with a pro, but establishing programs that may not have been in place previously, and providing both teacher and support personnel to develop programs that weren't in place otherwise, and that may have resulted out of necessity in a student having to attend such a program out of district, right? That there has been, if, if to use that as an example. And so that's created, as I've come to learn, an opportunity for students at the elementary level to stay here in the Wilmington Public Schools. That requires resources, and, and I, and, and so that's what I meant by that, that, you know, and as mentioned earlier, optimally, we would have no out of district students. I firmly do believe that, recognizing that there is a likely, not a likely, there is a reality for some at some, just given the various needs, that could be a place that we just might not be able to provide. But where we can build programs and establish the, the, the in-district programming, that should be the goal, and that's what we should seek to, to achieve where we can.
Mrs. Burns.
I, I have to say that I was elated by your, your priorities with regards to the staffing piece, because I think with regards to the youth risk behavior survey, the Walker report, I think that's indicative that if we're going to get out of the programming that we want to see, the consistency being executed within the classroom and the resources, we need, we need staff, and not just the bare minimum, we need, we need, I don't want to say healthy, because I don't want to make it sound so exorbitant, but we are continually, I see this department especially only expanding with the need that's we're seeing in society with regards to vaping and other addictive and risk, risky behaviors within our youth. And I, I can't stress strongly enough that I think it's time, and not that, you know, budget resources were limited to, that we do need to, and this speaks back to our strategic plan, build the army, lack of a better descriptive, in this area, so that the initiatives we have put forth and the ones that we are in the process of doing so can get off on the right foot and be executed consistently and effectively so that our students benefit, and then our staff also increase their skill set in the roles that they play within these initiatives. So I think this is a key, and I'd like to see it going forth in our future budgets as well, but I think this is a key foundation in ensuring that our programming remains, you know, becomes stronger and consistent so that our students, the end result hopefully is that one day maybe we don't have to look at out of district placements for our kids. So I just wanted to comment and just thank you for that.
Mr. Rexton.
One thing that I would like to see in January, when we take a deeper dive into the budget, and I, I mean, I expect there's already indications of that in the, in the memo here, that just as we've been using the strategic plan as a touchstone for the work that we've been doing this year, that we aligned the school improvement plans to aspects of the strategic plan, that your superintendent goals are aligned around aspects of the strategic plan, that, that I would, you know, really like to see in the, you know, budget presentation, that story of how the budget is supporting and tied to the elements and initiatives in the strategic plan. Because I think for one thing that, going to Ms. Newhouse's point, that that helps us make the case for the budgetary resources that we need, I kind of go back to the last school committee meeting where I was mentioning the session that I had attended at the NASC conference about, you know, how Medway had found that their ability to, you know, argue for and gain resources, the more that they had promoted and socialized and just dispersed their strategic plan, that the more community support they were able to gather for this initiative, I could just point to it, it's like, look, we did the strategic plan, this is what we need, and that the more that we can do the same, that we'll be able to, you know, hopefully kind of press, press that forward. The, the budget is, you know, very much, as you said, you're, it's a story, it's not just a financial document, it's a policy document. And I think the more that we are able to emphasize that and tell that story and tie in this budget to the strategic plan, then the better it will be as a budget and the more support we'll have for it.
Thank you. Good. Just have, can I just have a couple of quick questions? The BCBA, it doesn't list a school, is that across all eight buildings, or what's the plan on that?
We didn't tie that to a school, right?
No.
No, it'll be.
Probably just more attached to the programs than the real line.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or some version of the break.
My other question is, I, the slide that you showed of the other asks that are not reflected in the budget, I don't, is that on our binder, is that in our binder? And if not, can we have a, could we see that, or I guess this will be shared anyhow?
It will, yes.
Because that's helpful.
Yeah.
And then I just was, I had a quick question about the student population at Wildwood, just it says, it's greater, I just was curious as to how much greater, I don't know if we have that on hand, it's okay if you don't.
This is a classroom, right? I think twenty-five or roughly?
My own, so my, and just my thought there is, I know, I saw it quickly on that slide about a math interventionist, which I think has come up before, and this idea of how do we decide there is no math intervention support at the west or the north, I believe, and so just sort of how do we make that, that call on the reading support versus the, the math intervention support, which I did see there, so I'm, I'm just curious to see, has it been there before? And are we, are we listening to those requests?
It's twenty-five, first off.
Mm-hmm, twenty-five.
Or, or.
This was the Wildwood versus Butwell.
Yeah.
So kindergarten this year, FY twenty, there's a hundred and one Butwell, a hundred
The, the interventionist question is an important one, and it's one that, I think there, there are, there are a couple of other areas that I didn't touch upon specifically in this document, and I don't know that outright are necessarily in, as part of our strategic plan, but I guess by default, they certainly are part of our thinking about improvement planning. And those two areas, in no particular order, are curricular leadership and support, and coaching and interventionists. I mean, broadly, if I, if I may. It's something, both of those, that Brian and I in our, you know, we, not, a year and a half or so have talked frequently about. It's something that I think we need to be thinking about going forward. How do we bolster, you know, certainly there's, there's all these different sort of pockets that are, are, are certainly going to necessitate attention, we've talked an awful lot about student support and the related services as, as certainly appropriate, but thinking about, you know, leading the efforts and supporting the efforts, and so when I think about that support, I think about coaching, or I think about interventionists. And the best that we can tell, but please correct me if I'm wrong, there's not necessarily been an awful lot of, at least in recent times, thinking about what that best looks like going forward for our district. And that's whether there would, I would argue would be eight schools, or if we had six schools. Well, you know, the leadership, you know, there's some, the leadership realities of having the curriculum team leader model spanning both buildings, middle and high, but they're also teaching, and it's a, it's an impossible job, you know. Similarly, when you have six elementary schools, and you know, sometimes numbers don't matter, but I think in this case, it does have an impact, and what does the coordination look like? And, you know, assistance superintendent plays an important role, obviously, in guiding and leading those things, but on a deeper level, what is, you know, you don't have to go very far to find coaching models in place, or support of some sort that falls in the domains of literacy and numeracy. I do think that's something we need to talk about, and honestly, and I, I'm sorry to say, we sit here now, it's been one of those things that there's not, the focus has been around student support, strategic plan, but I absolutely think we need to think about it going forward, because our, our teachers and our programs need that support, too. I'm sorry, I wish I had a different answer for you.
That's okay. Thank you. Any other questions, discussion? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be back.
We'll be back. Okay. And that brings us to, Tristan, you'll have to, where are we? Oh, actually, no, the first, first reading of revised policies, but I was just not positive where we left off, I just have to look.
I don't think we got to.
We didn't do any.
We finished off what we wanted to skip.
So now, let me just, we have done the second reading. We approved, we covered all of that, okay, great. So now we are on the first reading of revised school committee policies, and we will start with BDE, subcommittees of the school committee. And I have that one circled, so there are some questions or comments. So BDE, subcommittees of the school committee. And so there were two questions on this one. Number two, the committee chairperson, subject to approval by the committee, will appoint the subcommittee chairperson and its members. Mrs. Burns, do you want to comment on that?
I, I just think it's always been, and I think this is a kind of another checks and balances, it's always been that the senior member of a subcommittee is the chair of the subcommittee. Doesn't always happen that way, because at the subcommittee meetings, sometimes it's sort of like you, you, you know what I mean? It's a, it's the ability, so it, it does offer some flexibility among the subcommittee members. I, I think it, it hasn't been a problem, and I don't, I don't see a reason to change the way we've done it. So that, that was my first, as it applies to number two, that was my first comment. And then with six pertaining to the dissolvement of the, of subcommittees, it does come up annually at our organizational meetings as a vote of the board that a subcommittee is no longer viable. I think at the very least, there should be a protocol, a clear protocol as to what the board's action in that looks like in dissolving a, a subcommittee that's no longer seen, so.
So you're suggesting we don't strike out number six?
Correct.
We keep it as is?
Yep.
And that on number two, instead of the committee chairperson, subject to approval, will appoint the subcommittee chairperson and its members, that the senior sitting member of that committee?
Yes.
Of that subcommittee?
Correct.
Will serve as the chairperson?
Which is in line with our school committee handbook, which I think has been, follows the pattern that we've always followed, so.
Okay. Questions or comments, discussion on that? Mr. Rexton.
Thing that I kind of question is that I wonder if the senior member of the subcommittee necessarily wants to have that role, and if we want to have the flexibility of someone else to, I mean, not that chairing a subcommittee is usually some kind of large, you know, administrative or parliamentary burden.
But as I said, it, there, there are times that I've been, I've served on subcommittees where somebody has deferred that to another member on the subcommittee to drive, and I think the important piece is, you know, is, is just the work towards it, and, and the chair, you know, it, it holds the same role as any other chair, it's just the orderly conduction of that meeting, but, but that's how it's, you know, it's been, you know, a little, you know, when the subcommittee forum gets together, it gets, you know, they can discuss that as an issue, but.
Sure.
Typically, I don't, I don't know, I know the subcommittees of like I've kind of been on, it's sort of, there's no hierarchy per se attached to it, we're all doing, you know, work towards the, you know, the topic at hand, so.
Okay.
I just offer that, so.
Does anyone have an issue with them? Mr. Bjork?
Yeah, I, I'm actually, I'm in line with David, that just, just by adding that, you're, you're removing flexibility if the, if that senior person doesn't, doesn't want it. Just by adding that clause, you're, you're removing flexibility in case a senior member is not interested in chairing. I mean, that, it couldn't be our default procedure without being a policy. If you, I mean, if you add that, then you, I think you'd have to add unless that senior person is not interested in the chair.
I just, I guess part of it is that we've always, and I'm just throwing it out there as a, a point, that we've always operated in that capacity, and that's how it's been reflected in our handbook, and that's how we've always operated since I've been on the board. So in gratitude, that's, obviously, we haven't been following the policy and have been, you know, making it a balanced approach, I, I do think there's benefits in a senior member, should they choose to, to chair a subcommittee, they bring that history, historical piece sometimes to certain subcommittees. I also think that I, I look more so not at this board, but any possible future boards, if there's a non-alignment of minds to make it a personal or personality thing, and that was, that was just another aspect, you know, I just, just some thinking that around supporting my opinion, that it just offers a checks and balance, and it's, you know, I'm, you know.
I'm not suggesting it's not advantageous.
No, no.
But put it, just to put it in a policy, it just seems to remove.
Maybe that, maybe that can be a default position unless there, we can just have a, unless the chair appoints a different person, sort of have a combination of them, and therefore, like if, if, when the committee is created, you can basically ask the senior person on it, just like, are you, are you happy? Are you happy chairing it, or should, or would you rather not? And if they're fine with it, then we just use that default, and if not, then we'll, we have the flexibility of someone else to do it.
Could we keep the policy as written here, but then sort of add that in our handbook? Like add that extra language in the handbook?
Well, the policy obviously precedes the handbook.
But the handbook could, could provide a bit more direct.
Clarification.
Sure, like is, first all, first the chair will check with the senior member, and if the senior member, I mean, that sort of, we could sort of outline it there, but then...
What do we, we should put that in the policy, because the policy is what regulates us as, as the handbook is simply a protocol of what we do, so if they don't align with one another, then we are out of compliance with our policy.
But I, I don't think they would be out of line, if I, unless I'm mistaken, you're suggesting that the policy say that essentially that the chair is going to appoint the, the chair of the subcommittee, but then as far as further guidance in our handbook, that the first, it's understood that the chair is going to appoint the senior member unless they don't want it, or something like that.
How about something like this? Senior member of said subcommittee will have first, first refusal for the chair, position of chair.
I, I'm not against that, but I think it needs to be incorporated into the policy, so.
Okay, um, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest we bring this back to the sub- Um, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest we bring this back to the subcommittee, to Wordsmith a little bit. Is it okay?
Okay.
All right. So BDE is going back to the committee.
Just before we move on, I'll just say, I, I tend to agree with MJ on number six.
Number six.
I think that's, I think that's a good thing to keep in there.
I agree. Okay. BEC, executive session. And there was one comment on the second page. School committee chair and the superintendent will review executive session minutes for possible declassification on at least annually, and if necessary, will consult with legal counsel. Mrs. Burns, you recommended that we keep that. Instead of striking that out, we keep that.
Yes, and I suggested that sometimes even with the best intent, there's sometimes with certain, whether it be personnel or union matters, that we may not necessarily be aware of. And it would just, I think, add a layer of liability that, you know, once a year, just those that have yet to be declassified, just go into review, however that want to group. But I think it would just protect our liability.
Any issues, discussion, questions?
I tend to agree with that.
Okay. All right. So BEC, is there a motion?
This is first read.
First read. Just kidding. Just joking. Okay. The next one.
Actually, I have just a quick question. Looking at this now, the, the declassification language just strikes me as a little bit odd. Maybe we could just change that to release, which is, I think, what we're talking about.
The executive session minutes for?
The executive for possible release.
Possible release.
Because that's, I mean, that's essentially what de-classifying them is, that we release them publicly.
Got that. Okay. Any issues with that? Great. All right. So we'll see that during our second read next time. Next one, BEDB-dash-E. My recommendation is to hold this during the pilot until we can figure out how we feel about public comment in a different spot. And then, Mrs. Burns recommended that we align it with our format, sort of using the same language. I don't disagree with that. So I think this goes back to the subcommittee. We hold it against our, our current format and then maybe then just wait until this pilot. Does that make sense?
Along with the two policies on the public comment.
I agree.
And we'll hold them until we know what we want to do with that.
Mrs. Dixie, you got that? So BEDB-dash-E will hold for, until we finished. Next, we have BGE, which is policy dissemination. I did not receive any questions or comments on that. Any questions? Is everyone with me? Mrs. Burns, you, are we good?
Oh, yeah.
Can we move on? Okay.
Do we have this listed as online on our website? I don't see that.
The superintendent will be available for inspection at the superintendent's office. I thought we did add.
I think we had, is that another policy? I kind of got snagged on that as well, but I, I don't know if that was a part of a previous policy that we did approve as to the access to it.
School committee's policy manual will be considered a public record and will be available for inspection at the superintendent's office and online.
I think we, didn't reference one for. Yes, sorry, no, but the previous policy, like within the last few months, you were?
Well, there was, I, I, I want to say that, not in the state right now to recall it exactly, that this is the first time we've reviewed this policy, yes?
Yes.
So yes, that was a previous policy that had come up with maybe public record requests? Or not, I don't know, public record requests.
No, there was some with other locations.
Something like that, with where locations, we did wipe out the majority.
We did.
Because it was the Wilmington Library, the Town Hall, things like that, we, we.
That was the budget. Was that the budget?
It might have been.
Oh, maybe it could have been a budget.
I think so.
So is it okay if we do, will be available online?
I mean, it is. We have it posted.
Right.
Yeah.
And will be available for inspection online or at the superintendent's office? Mrs. Dixie, do you have that? Okay.
Well, online, online and the superintendent's office.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Both places.
Yes, online and at the superintendent's office. BGF, suspension of policies. Did not receive any comments, any questions? Next, we have BHC, school committee staff communications. Haven't received any questions or comments. We good? Okay. BHE, use of electronic messaging by school committee members. I feel like I should ask you for a thumbs up or something. Moving, okay. BIA, new school committee member orientation. Received one comment to add school committee handbook after student and staff handbook. So you see, so we have the second paragraph and then the A through F.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I recommend adding G, school committee handbook.
Sounds good.
Sound good?
Yeah.
Any other questions or concerns or discussion about BIA? Okay. Next, we have BIBA, school committee conferences, conventions, and workshops. No comments or questions on this. And then we have BID, school committee member compensation and expenses. Received a comment, is this relevant, is this relevant at all? And so we thought we have a discussion. School committee shall serve without compensation. And there's a lot of strikeouts here, so I'll just accept that a member may be compensated for their services by a majority vote at town meeting. No member of a school committee in any town shall be eligible to the position of teacher or superintendent of public schools they're in or in any union school or superintendency union or district in which their town participates. And so is this relevant, is that the, I think that is actually referring to the compensation, Mrs. Burns?
It, it is actually.
Yeah.
So I don't, we didn't delete the, the whole.
Yeah, the whole thing, but the compensation piece, yeah.
I just, you know, I, I'm just perplexed by, I think, I think keeping the, the school committee shall serve without compensation piece, but I just, I don't understand the policy with regards to accept that a member or, you know, can only one member do it? Or, you know what I mean? I don't know what the rationale behind it is, knowing that, how would that affect, I mean, we have a line item within our school budget for school committee expenses and I understand the rationale with, you know, outside of any unusual conferences that someone may want to go to. I mean, that's usually encompassed within our school budget. So I, I just don't know, I don't even know what our charter states with regards to that. I, I don't, I don't quite align with, and I don't know, but I just need a broader, I think a broader understanding of it.
Yeah. Anybody?
So you're talking about, so compensate, so if one of us provides some kind of consulting service to the, to the school system, that would need to be voted on at town meeting?
Interesting.
Well, but it, it, like, it doesn't relate to a professional realm, but it says that, but it pertains to, I mean.
Let's say I'm, I'm an elevator consultant and I become engaged in assessing the elevators in the school system, then, then I would have to be paid by the district.
Okay.
And town meeting would have to vote to make sure I'm not having a conflict of interest.
If that is the, if that's the purpose of this, then I think it needs more clarification with regards to, except that a member, you're not acting as a member, you're acting as a.
Yeah, that, I, I'm, that's not the sense that I actually get that what this is, what this is saying, because from the first sentence, shall serve without compensation, except, and then they talk about, may be compensated for their services. I think they mean school committee service.
Well, that's.
Not additional commercial.
Well, because school committee member compensation expenses, so it's as a school committee member is the title of the clause.
There's no compensation. Yeah, I'm sorry, I took it, yeah.
No, no, it's, I, good, I'm just trying to understand the rationale behind it because I don't quite grasp it, you know? And I don't think any one member would go forth and say, well, I think I should be compensated for my work on the board.
I kind of do.
Well, you want. But I, I, I just, it, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me.
It's like, actually.
Yeah, it, it doesn't make sense to me, especially as to how the, the additional aspects of the policy reads.
Sure. Mr. Smart?
One of my questions, questions is, is the source on this? Like, is this like, usually the source, there isn't a source listed on the bottom of this, so.
Legal reference, MGLC.
There's legal references, but like, all the other ones, I think, are like Mass or, or, you know, MASC or whatever, like.
Mr. Rex, are you checking that?
I, I almost wonder if this, one point it came, came up at some point, we had in, you know, way back, way back when.
Well, and, yeah, so I mean, clearly it's here.
I'd like to make a suggestion too, if after this discussion has reached its end, then maybe since Andy is looking at another policy for us, if he may have a better understanding as to districts, other districts have this piece and what the rationale behind having it in their policy book is.
Okay.
You know, if we've got him looking at another policy quickly, it, it might help clarify the necessity behind it.
So BID, got that?
Yeah. I mean, I think as an actual general matter of policy, we just have that school committee members serve without compensation, just period.
Okay.
That's just how we do it here.
I think, so that's how, I mean, the school committee shall serve without compensation, period. But we'll run this by Andy.
Yeah, I think that.
How's that sound? So if Andy offers some newfound information, then we'll, we'll bring it back for a first read. If not, then that, you'll see that in your packets next week, ending at that.
I think, we have packets next week?
Not next week, but a week after.
I think the latter portion.
It feels like every week.
I think the latter portion is more applicable to, you know, our thoughts.
Yeah, I agree. Then we have BJ, school committee legislative program. I did not receive any comments or questions on that. And the same with BK, which is school committee memberships. Any discussion or questions? Great. Can you speak now, forever hold your peace? All right. So we'll review this with Tristan, but thank you for keeping us organized. I know this is a lot, so we appreciate it. All right, so that brings us to the end of first reading of revised policies. So we are now at subcommittee reports. Are there any subcommittee reports? Mrs. Burns?
I just, there's no subcommittees that I attend, but I just would like to shout out to any new members if they have yet to do charting the course. MASC is holding a charting the course on January 11th from 8:00 AM to 3:00 at Everett High School, which is a lot closer than Marlboro. And if you're interested and you have yet to meet that requirement, which is, I think, a policy of ours, you can register on MASC.org. And it's all, would also be indicative to sign up your membership with MASC too, that way you can get on the list serve. And if there's any questions you may have, you know, in a broader aspect, it's always a helpful resource to kind of ask other members. So I would highly recommend it.
State Everett High?
Everett High School, yes. January 11th. But you do have to register.
You can send that out. Thank you. Any other subcommittee? Mr. Exton?
I'd just like to mention that there will be a CPAC meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 in the library.
Okay, great.
CPAC meeting tomorrow evening. Thank you. Okay. Correspondence?
There isn't any this evening.
No correspondence. Future school committee dates, we have January 8th, 2020, January 22nd. Upcoming events, we have the CPAC meeting tomorrow evening here at the high school.
Yes.
And we have winter vacation, December 23rd through January 1st, 2020. And so, let me think this, yes. Go ahead.
Anything else?
Mr. Ex, well, no, but I think we're going, so we'll do adjournment, but then enter into, is that how that works? So a motion to adjourn. Mrs.
I make a motion to adjourn?
I think we move.
I think we need to move.
Exactly.
Adjourn and move, okay. So let me read this.
And not to return.
Not to, not to return, got it. The Wilmington School Committee will enter into executive session pursuant to MGLC 30AS 21A2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. The Wilmington School Committee will not return to regular session following the executive session. Mr. Bjork, thank you, seconded by Mr. Fenley. Will do a roll call vote. And Mr. Ragsdale, we want to do this with names, correct?
Yes, that's how we're supposed to do it.
That's how we're supposed to do it, we're going to do it, we're doing it by name, so state your name and then say yes or no.
Steve Bjork, yes.
Joe Newhouse, yes.
Jason Mahan, yes.
Jesse Fenley, yes.
David Ragsdale, yes.
MJ Burns, yes.
Jen Branson, yes. Thank you. Good night, everybody.